Getting started so that we can be on time. Um, the only thing that's going to change is probably more discussion agenda if we are removing item number five and some parts of recreation discussion regarding public works. Um, we will start with the presentation from our CPAs. Um, who's asked if there was anything they would say fire to the presentation. I know your counsel here, he was here. We're looking for the CPAs.
If you just want to go through them. Okay.
So, I'm Garrett Williams with HHM CPAs. We want to thank y'all for allowing us to do another year's audit. Um, we enjoy working with the city of Anniston. Um, so it's a pleasure to be here. And we are going over the fiscal year 24 audit. So, I'm kind of in the way. Uh, this was audit team, uh, our partner Brock Oliver, uh, me, uh, then we had Josh, Griffin, and Joel. Uh, several of them were working remote and then me, uh, Griffin, and Joel came on side uh, during the fiscal year to work on the audit. So, this is the team. So, uh, for this presentation, we'll go over the scope of what we do in an audit, the audit results, uh, required communications on our part with the city council, and then just some brief, uh, high level financial highlights. So first of all, we were here to do the financial statement audit. Uh, we also did a single audit, and a single audit, uh, would not, does not happen from year to year. It only happens when y'all spend over a certain amount of federal grant funds during the year, so this can fluctuate, uh, happen one year and not happen the next. But y'all did hit that threshold, so we also did a single audit during, uh, for this fiscal year audit. So, what is an audit? Uh, our job is just to make sure the financial statement package we give y'all is reasonably stated and free of material misstatements. We don't obviously have the ability to look at every transaction, um, that comes through, so our job is just to make sure that it is reasonably recorded and not the material is going to be off that would affect a user's decisions when they look at the financials. And, uh, at the end of it, we issue a opinion inside our report on those financials. Uh, as part of the audit, uh, in the beginning, we look at the, uh, various risks that, uh, that are out there for the city. Uh, this helps us determine what kind of procedures we should do and what kind of areas we should focus on in the audit, uh, since we aren't able to look at every single thing that goes on. So, part of that is we look at internal controls for the city, uh, revenue recognition's a big one, capital assets are obviously a big thing, and, and even grant compliance is, is a very big deal, uh, especially, especially with all the funds being pumped into local governments these days. So our audit results, we had an unmodified, unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can have. We didn't have any material issues, uh, significant deficiencies, uh, during the audit, um, so very good. For the single audit, uh, we ended up testing the ARPA funds. Um, I think we've tested ARPA funds the last two years, since the city got quite a bit of that. We didn't note any issues during our testing of the ARPA grant. Uh, we look at internal controls around the grant program as well as, uh, making sure the city is in compliance with all the requirements related to the ARPA grant, uh, during the audit. Uh, and yes, no material weaknesses or the significant deficiencies in the current year or the prior year related to the grant testing that we did. Um, some required communications, uh, no major changes to accounting policies, all that's kind of in note one of your financials, the hundred and twenty pages or whatever it is. No consultations with other accountants noted, we did not note any fraud during the course of our audit. Estimates, uh, we are required to review management's estimates, this could be depreciation, um, pensions, allowances, um, to make sure those are reasonable, those were all reasonable for the year. Difficulties, uh, we don't have any difficulties out here. Uh, I've been doing this audit for several years, and I will say this has probably been the best audit, uh, on our side. Um, we made minimal entries, and I think those entries were even given to us by, uh, Jessica and them, their accounting team, awesome. And, uh, it was really good job. Uh, makes it easier for us when we don't have to do a lot of cleanup work, um, so the accounting team's really doing good work, uh, especially this year. Uh, any incorrect misstatements, those were not, uh, material for the financials, uh, that we came across during the audit. So, we put together a high level review of general fund budget to actual. Um, since the general fund is the main operational fund for the city, it's good to kind of take a high level look at it. Um, one thing we like to note is that both revenues and expenditures across the board, uh, are showing positive variances, so your revenues exceeded what you budgeted for, which is what you want, and then also, actual expenditures came in under final budgeted numbers across the departments, which is good. Um, and which helps lead to your positive change in the fund balance for the fiscal year. So, um, you've got a lot of funds in the city, uh, but the general fund's obviously the main one we like to look at. Um, and this, this is good. If, if we saw a bunch of negative variances, this would be something you really need to look at and figure out what's going on with the budgeting process. Uh, but the departments are doing good, the accounting team's doing good at staying within this, so. And then, again, looking at the general fund, we like to just see the fund balance that you're in. I have two numbers up here, I have the, the whole fund balance, twenty-one million, and then unassigned, there are some things baked into fund balance, pre-pays, inventories, other things that aren't really available per se, so gets you to the unassigned number of twenty point nine million. With all of our local governments, we'd like to look at that fund balance and see how does that compare to total expenditures? Um, if you had to operate off your fund balance, you weren't getting any funds in, you know, how long could you go, or how solid is the fund balance? So, looking at it, um, it's roughly forty-one percent, or five months. Um, there's kind of a rule of thumb, we like it to be somewhere in two to four months, so over that's obviously good, under that, start to be a little worried, maybe it's a little low. Um, but you have a healthy fund balance, um, as the fiscal year in, uh, and it puts you in a good position for growth and projects and anything you, you may look at doing, uh, for future years. And, any questions?
Let me ask you, um, Tom Oliver, you ever made a recommendation, asking, is there any good options?
As far as using the fund balance? Well, uh, and, and something I was talking to Jessica about, eh, eh, from city to city, uh, they, they usually come up with some kind of, almost like a safety net, like here's what we want to always keep in the fund balance, and I can't remember if Anniston has a set percentage off the top of my head, but whatever you determine that is, whether it's, you know, twenty percent of, of your expenditures or twenty-five, uh, you want to definitely stay within that, and then anything over that, you know, it's available. Um, I, I definitely wouldn't use it to supplement operations, because that's a slippery slope to trending down to a negative fund balance over the course of years, but if you have special projects that, you know, you want to use that money for, or you just want to know that, hey, if I take loans out for bonds, I have the money back in the bank to help justify this if, if we need to, you know, dip into it. Um, I, I don't have a set number, um, but, uh, I, I definitely think, I wouldn't probably go lower than twenty-five percent of your, of your future or your expenditures in the year, as far as looking at the fund balance. Uh, but I definitely don't, I'm not the person who, who knows exactly what that is, it's definitely city by city, uh, and more of a personal preference.
If I could calculate, it was seventeen percent?
True.
That, that we would put into reserves?
Okay, oh, seventeen percent's what you, I think that's what Jessica was leaning towards when I talked to her, so. So, if seventeen percent's the number, you definitely don't want to drop below seventy percent, and, and maybe in future presentations, we show that and show what's left, because that's really your, your, your fund balance available, is that twenty million minus seventeen percent, whatever that comes out to be, and that's kind of the wiggle room you have for potential use, I guess. Um, so, you really don't want to say, we have twenty point eight million, we could just blow, uh, right now, yeah, and be down to zero fund balance, um, so it's much less than that, but there's still a significant, um, fund balance left to potentially make use of. But, it's a good position to be in, I think y'all have had positive fund balances for the last several years, so y'all are increasingly moving in the right direction, um, and just puts y'all in a good financial position for, you know, whatever the city decides to do in the coming years, I guess, at those moments.
Can we brush your panel? Well, we thank you and appreciate you.
Yes.
Where did you go?
No problem, and, uh, my, my contact information's on the PowerPoint and the packet, so if anybody has additional questions, happy to reach out, be on the call, so, but, thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, we will move forward with item number two, and it is regarding special events alcohol licenses. We will be, I believe all of these are on our consent agenda, and we will have public hearings on all four special events licenses. Any questions, council? We'll move on to item number three, which is the cheap lid I bet trail vegetation maintenance bid. Uh, this is not on the voting agenda, and I, I believe this is up for discussion. So, I, I was looking at it, um, and we received one complete bid from B and B developers in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. I guess, from my point of view, my concern is why can't we do that? Why can't Public Works maintain the cheap lid I bet trail? Why are we putting, I mean, is it, is it the workload? Do we not have the materials? Like, is there something specific that outsourcing is necessary? And I, I don't think Public Works is here to even answer that, I was just curious as to see why we're getting it out and not doing it in our own hands. Yeah, so there was conversations with the public works director, with our partner director, with our project manager, and the idea is there wasn't enough staff in order to maintain the trail, and most everything else they have to, so the idea was to bid out the project. Again, like you mentioned, we received one bid, and then a B and B developers, and also a company that constructed the trails for you. Um, if you will look on page one twenty-seven, you also see the B and B's finance director that already put, regarding that bid.
You know, that makes it say one hundred and sixty-six?
Right.
No, no way.
To cook, to cook.
Before, if you're talking on the other side, and it's a twelve-month contract, what are you doing from the middle of December to March?
I mean, we've already taken away, you know, Public Works having to go around and pick up trails residentially, you know, that, that's a large part of, of what they shouldn't be doing, and so my concern is, you know, I, I get the work one hundred percent, and I get, you know, them saying that, but I, and, and I respect and, and thank for this one for letting us know that we financially could do it, but one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars would go to something that would benefit, you know, the community as a whole. I'm just, I'm just not sure, um, if that is something that we should be putting money into, would we have, we pay staff and attend?
Well, obviously, you'd have to put some money into it, whether it's, it's, whether it's an overhead paying staff to, to do it, um, or taking another bill, um, but I, I think this is, so.
Yes, it is, it, it really do, we look at, in fact, I know it, you do, um, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, or six miles, what are they, you know, four, four to what they have, four feet on either side, um, I don't, I look at, uh, you know.
And we'll also note, council, when the cheap lid I bet trail, when the construction of it was decided, maintenance of it was in fact being, so that's why we're now having to figure out what that looks like.
This, this is the situation I look at, is that we constructed a trail, we added a lot to a trail that was constructed, when they did, and then, as I said, then factor into the fact that maintenance has to be maintained, and that maintenance, the maintenance is not just for this, for the rest of the trail's life, but it's going to wind up costing us money, and as I said the other, uh, last week, is that we're putting food in the hills for people who come here, ride the trails, um, enjoy the trail, but for the most part, they don't spend a dime in this city, and that's not good for us. Or if, if they do, they don't just spend a dime, they don't spend a dollar in this city.
I just, I, I, I feel like we need to further this discussion, I think we need to sit down with Public Works and say, and even Park, and say what's true with these, or what came into hand, because, I mean, I know that we took number five off of the discussion, but it's like, okay, Public Works is saying that they want to, uh, start taking care of all the city grass cutting that Park was doing, but they're saying that you can't maintain cheap lid I bet trail, so what is it?
Right.
You know, I, I, I think we're, I think we need to really sit down and figure out exactly what we can do before we decide to put one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars into something that I believe we should be able to maintain, and us not factoring that in is our call. So, you know, we have to accept on that, but I don't think that the people should be paying that much money into something that we can figure out. So, if this, um, is if the council's desire to reject that bid and reevaluate what next step should be?
From my standpoint...
So, have we, from a partner, from a public works perspective, have we, have we assessed how much, how many man hours, how much it would cost us to do?
Yes, I agree, and...
Really, there's no question of question, because, again, we are, with the one trillion that comes up, it's taking on a lot of stuff, and I, I, I agree, they're going to be picking up the household and stuff, however, just, just understand, once, once it becomes, it's all we have, we're going to be picking up trash every week, what you're going to see is Anniston becoming bigger and upside than it already has, because as, as we've seen this in the past, the more we pick up, the more people find this, you know. Now, that can see, we got, if, if we're moving something around, before we can truly say the one sixty-six is excessive, how much is going to cost us to do it, uh, we should have the resources to do it, we should, and we, again, accounting does it in that case, being an accountant, we have, that is an old time, that's one of the, and, and, I just saying, we always, every time, we could trail, we lock in, so, where we haven't done it, or actually it would cost the city twice the money, now, this is part of it, twice the money, so, right. Um, but, that's an narrative, and, and for it, this is something that we have to look at on a, the rest of the existence of the trail, basically, so, are we willing to shell out that portion of money, that much money for, it's something, majority of our citizens don't use, that, you know, that will be, that will become a bigger issue when we're going, we really need to see how much it would cost, you know, see if Public Works could put man hours on, how many man hours it would take to maintain, that even if we could exit, and basically get it out, just like, that way we can see, because of this, if this something we can ship around in our budget, and we not spend that money, just do it in-house, that would save the city some money.
Now, one thing that I look at, you know, they want a twelve-month contract, and, um, now is still the middle of December, the, the, after the middle of December, all the needs of that, so what do you know between the middle of December to the middle of August, and the greatest of all the year? So, you know, it really needs to, it really, it was actually being done, because this, uh, these, uh, these things are giving us anything but material advantages for the
Because of the, of some money for all that stuff, yeah, I agree.
All right, so we have decided we're going to take that off the table and reject the bid, um, we will move on to, we removed item number five, um, and we'll move on to council member Downing, items, I know the first one is the speed calming devices ordinance discussion that you brought up a couple meetings ago.
That's right, Mayor, I know that you have, have any feedback from anyone else, I know that you said that you had some, some notes, um, that you would like to, um, that you would like to, to make, um, other than that, I think we can, we can have it written and get off and perfeiting it, if there's any, any rest.
Yeah, so, there was one portion, uh, that I just kind of wrote some notes to, uh, it said, proceeding with implementation of traffic, calming devices will be at the discretion of the city council, this is basically after fifty...
Section, I'm sorry, I should, uh...
Section fifteen point six one procedure, but it's number two. I know we brought this up, but, uh, council member Harris actually brought this up about, you know, it being up to the council on whether we will issue a speed bump or not, I feel like if it comes to us, if our constituents are asking, we're just going to agree to it, and so my concern is how do we assess when, if it's necessary, and if, if we're just saying, hey, if a, if a neighborhood comes and says, hey, we need a speed bump because so-and-so is speeding, what's the measures to say no to? You know, I do know that there was a portion where it says sixty-seven percent of the residents of all properties in the affected area have a sonic petition needing a requirement to remove the device, so are we saying that, are we going to need sixty-seven percent to agree for us to allow the device to?
No, this, this stipulation would take that, would, this would take that stipulation away, I'm trying to find, you, you got the, you've got the updated...
You have a new one.
...one of their...
Yeah. Those additions aren't moving in your back, because the terms you did...
So, Mayor, once we've, uh, looked at it, I, I see what you're referencing, referencing to there, but one of the things that we have to remind, you know, when normal citizens ask that, we pick up a speed bump there, they're there all the time, they see the people going in conflict, they see the speeding, but if we are, the only thing we're doing is looking at the requests they're making to us, so we're going to need, um, assist the citizens, and ensuring that we're doing what they're asking us to do, and it's actually needed, but for the most part, they're there to see the people speeding or doing reckless things on a continuous basis.
I totally understand, I, I agree with you, but the issue we have with it, One Street in Golden Springs, this went on for years, and years, and years, and Chief Bolz went over there, and he sat there all day long one day, and he said it was not what they were saying, some people, if one person speeds, then they're going to speed bump, I mean, that's been my experience, and so I, I agree with you as well, we've got to have some kind of parameters, or we're going to be bombarded, everybody wants one.
Well, that's, I guess that's my point, you know, if, if we're saying, hey, it's at the council's discretion, discretion, well, I mean, if someone comes to us and says, hey, I want a speed bump, I'm not going to say no, you know, because there's no, technically there's no measures in place to determine whether it's actually needed or not, so if we're going to get to the point where we're saying, hey, it's up to council's discretion, I'm fine with that, but we're going to give everybody the speed bump who asks.
Well, so, what I, what I did, because one of the mainstream staff that will request the speed bumps or the calming devices, I had Public Works engineer come out to me, because of one, they don't like, there's speed bumps in areas that have a curves, there's no curve on the side of the street, or it's an incline or a beeline, or there's an incur, because the speed bump can make some people lose control. Now, like you said, it's, if it's my house, and one car comes by, making know it, we got to go over this problem, and we need to do something about the noise, because that's where I live, that's why I want my peace. I do think we need to look at, we need to look at it from a, a safety perspective first, right? Because there's some people wanted, one dude wanted one, that was in a curve that was going down here, and he joined forces to snap at my name, because I told him, no, you can't do it, because that was just not safe, I mean, safety is over everything, but I, I was under the impression that when, if it was something that was marginalized, we need to track that, and, and always through tracks, and we did tracks, and, but we got engineering to come out and see what was feasible. I would agree, if we did, because what happens, the minute you tell somebody no, you, you can tell people no all year long, well, for the first three years of your term, but if you tell them no in the relation year, you ain't got nothing the whole time.
So, that's just, that's...
So, it is, yes.
So, I just, I, I'd like to lay out one bit, I think the only thing that I would add is if there was some measure, like, if we had Public Works give an assessment and say, this, or a recommendation, this is why I agree that the speed bump is necessary, or this is why I, I do not agree that we need a speed bump in this area, and they have to identify the safety issues with that, and then that is recommended to the council, and then from our, from that point, there's a discretion there, I just, and I think, I know a long time ago, the conversation was surrounding speed bumps were because it was a liability, but if I'm not mistaken, there, it's only a liability, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Downing, if we install it in.
No, I, I mean, if, 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 for example, you installed a speed bump in an area that calls vehicles to exit the road and hit a pedestrian, that would be a defective design, and there could be municipal liability for that. So, yeah, I mean, I think, as long as you're factoring in the safety concerns, you know, then I think you're fine, and you're exercising the discretionary function, and you should be fine, but if we don't exercise that discretion and make that determination, this is a safe location for this traffic control bias, and, and it leads to an accident, which means we're killed, and then we can't, we can't, you know.
So, what if we place some, some language in this, that Public Works will, the person who made, according to this, will make a, individual will make a request for a speed bump, Public Works will assess this, they will give a written recommendation to the council, either in favor of it or non-infavor of it, and if they're non-infavor, they will list the safety concerns, and at that point, we can decide whether to be for them.
I mean, I think that's kind of how it's already written, um, I mean, to, to, to a degree, that, that's, that's the language that's been...
I think you want to articulate the safety or evaluate the safety concerns, whether you put one in or you don't, you know, and you want to have regular, because you're not going to have liability for not putting one in, you know, it's, it's really, when you do put one in, you need the record to show that we made a proper evaluation.
Now, one of the things that, one of the things that also needs to be included there in Public Works, because anyone who asks to sit out, who asks to do this, but the time frame, which, like, 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 as I said, the chief went out there seven days, to determine effectively, as to whether or not, they are actually doing it or not, you need to, uh, develop a timeframe, it can't be one day, it has to be, no, in this case, probably no minimum, no less than four days, because therefore, you're there over a timeframe to say, yes, I observed and do this timeframe, or no, I did not observe anyone speeding or going on.
Well, great point, because in the drug guy's area, all over two, over, over three, over two, over one... Well, great point because in the driving ice area, all over two, over from more three, roll more, two, roll more than more, three where the east riders are, from Friday night to Sunday night. From Fri- Friday evening to Sunday night, it becomes next morning. And so certain times are, you know, now Monday through Thursday, Monday through Thursday, not a bad. But on Sunday, on Sunday evenings, when they're gathering, their families are down in the water. In Ward three, when people come over there and don't make that deal, and they just be getting it. I gotta stop standing in front of my house and then I don't work for years. And then you just, people don't even say, whoa, man, they just keep going, you know. And so it's, we need to find, there may like, so there may be great. A speed bump may not be ideal some places Monday through Thursday, but Friday through Sunday, I swear for God, I mean, you never, ever six feet up around my house. But that's just because of the amount of traffic that comes and runs that circuit. So you're right, we might not have to look at, so that's something that we've got to be observing. And I think if it's not already in, I think uh, police department need also be involved in, or just trying to, because they, they would go.
Well, I think they should, they should be involved in um, in monitoring and evaluating. And then, and likely, if, if there are places where speeding is um, is causing a chronic safety hazard, then likely, police already have that information.
Right, right.
Whether it's in responses to, to vehicle accidents or tickets or other, other, other uh, safety issues, there would already be a record of, and a lot of instances, there is already that information. It's already a chronic speeding zone or safety hazard or whatever. And if people are complaining, typically, there's gonna be a problem. You're gonna have the one-off where the one resident on X Street says, these teenagers are hot shot, nothing down the street. And they're, you know, maybe occasionally are, like every street, like Quintard Avenue. Um, but if people are complaining to the point where they're satisfied with calming devices on their streets, on their roadways, there likely is a problem. Um, but we, there needs to be some type of measure of monitoring. Certainly, whether that is historical, uh, monitoring of historical evidence or monitoring of new evidence. Um, but I would say that there should be plenty of mon- of historical evidence that would show the calming devices are needed in most of these locations where they're being requested.
So basically, what I'm gathering is um, what we just need to add is evaluating the traffic for a specific timeframe and, and maybe give approves on what we think that timeframe, what, what's feasible or reasonable. And then maybe adding some safety language and requirement at the end writing.
Would you have some rule on what are reasonable timeframe would be?
Well, I think that's more like a police engineering question. But I think your talk, that, that to me is aimed at, do we really need one or not? Right? Like, is there really a problem?
Right.
And from a liability perspective, that's not the question. It's, is this good, you know, is there speeding here or not? It's the question of, is it a safe mechanism? Right? And so that would be really an engineering question. Really all, I mean, you make a great point that sitting there from eight to eight, from Monday through Thursday, it may not, may not capture the situation. So I mean, I, I would think, you know, I, I don't know that we can say that there's a certainty. I would just say that there needs to be a reasonable sampling, you know, part of the service chances. So if the complaints are weekend racing, you know, if you want, that would be the priority.
So sixty-seven percent, that's, we gotta make this high.
It's for the removal of the device.
They can also call handshakes vehicles, that's another thing.
They can, if you're running, if there's a, if there's a combination of, 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 you have to calm the devices.
You wouldn't want, it had a forty-five mile per hour speed limit.
No, except for thirty dollars per hour or lower. It's uh, section fifteen six one.
So you're on the.
You're on, or you're on, you're on the current, you're on the.
Yeah, you're on the, you're on the current one. The, the one that, uh, anyone that will help to create is, is on the removal part, section fifteen sixty-nine.
Oh.
And so it says sixty-seven percent of the residents of all properties in affected area of the sonic petition meeting the requirements to remove the device. So it was removed from section fifteen point sixty-one?
In the past, what I found out to be, what I found to be true is the majority of people do want them. There are, as far as the ones who don't want them, they're like, but it's not like, I would say the vast majority, when someone requests it, like, the majority of the people do want it, had very few say they don't want it. But they're there, so that's the purpose, I think, of getting the petition. Just to say, well, we have someone who did it for this, and you're in the minority because you're against it or whatever. Just ensure sort of a democratic process.
How about the path forward as far as being, you know?
I think we can file a draft, we can circulate a final draft um, for next to our session.
I agree.
Um, and add on the agenda for first reading of our session.
Um, I wanna backtrack because I missed the chief line of trail access policy. It's regulating access and connection to chief line of trail. We, that is on the voting agenda for today, it's on its first reading, so we don't have to take any action on it. Uh, but I wanted to go back to that, because I accidentally skipped that.
Do you want that show on, if you have it in there, sorry?
On, in my packet, it doesn't have a page at first. So it's just the last ordinance in the packet. Alright, we will uh, move back to, which also I believe is on the agenda for the removal of the Ten Street Elementary School signs. Um, that's on its first reading, but we won't be voting on it, but we would like to talk about that.
So um, I've had several requests for removing the school zone from um, Ten Street Road, Henry Road and the surrounding areas. Um, just removing the um, provisional speed limit signs, do not enter signs, um, and other access um, signage. It's just um, arbitrary, it's just out of the.
Based on all the schools.
There's no school there anymore, there's no actual school there anymore, so we don't need, you know.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Uh, it's on its first reading, so we won't take any action on it tonight, but we will, that makes sense, we'll maybe, so if you guys have any questions regarding that. Alright, we will move on to councilmember Carrington's item, closing alley and installing stop signs, speeding barriers.
Yep, um, really is, and it's really a hazard. And we found a even greater hazard, um, when you would go out the east side of that. So the accident took her earlier and blocked it off until they get the okay on that. But what happens is, we have a elderly person coming out of there, from their driveway, coming into um, the street with heavily, you know, the young people snapped, they're coming through their steve. And really, she's afraid to come out of the driveway. And because majority of the time, when you do that, um, there's always something. Then the, uh, the east side, you can't even see a person actually coming up on that side. And that is more than dangerous uh, when you end up doing it. So um, you know, you, you aware of what happened?
That's what I'm trying to figure in my head.
Uh, Auntie Joyce.
I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah. And we put a one-way sign in that alleyway once upon a time.
Well, it's, because someone must have taken it, because there's actually not anything there now. But the one that's going out on the east side, really that portion needs to be closed because it is so narrow there. Is that even the person who was actually coming out of that way, if they're not paying attention, they could wind up in the woods. So, um, and she's just afraid, if not her, someone's gonna actually run and get into the kill. Just coming out of the alleyway trying to get uh, to the main street.
I agree. Don't we have, and I always get confused about this, when installing traffic devices, we, there was some resolution that we agreed to do it twice a year or something or like that? So November would be the second time of the year, I don't know, I think so. Could we get this on the schedule for November, if everyone's in agreement with it?
So is that a policy that we'll maintain, that we'll, we'll consider traffic, traffic devices tw- only twice a year?
It was through the line, like, four years ago, I think that was my first time to be on, my first year in office. Um, I really can't remember what that discussion was. Um, but I do remember it being a group of mine, and it was probably something we could change. But there was, there was a reason for it, um, and I have to just go back to my, my list.
Well, but there is also provision that if, if a situation presents an immediate safety issue, like a form of death, or who killed that, turned to be in control, it could be, it could be an exception. But for the most part, trying, because what was happening, one of the ones that I think there was a lot of, we're signing up here today.
Next week, you gotta go out.
Next week, on somewhere else.
Yeah.
And we wanted this guy to consolidate, consolidate that, with the, with the family, with the, with the family. If you keep going on one by one, you may mess around and miss out on the traffic flow and.
And it's not efficient.
Right, so we agreed to, to have it reviewed that way to give, to each council member, each calculated positions of everything, situation. And then also we gave us a chance to, come over and ask, we gave a chance to have this study down and see, does it need a stop sign, do you, do you traffic that or whatever? So, yeah, that was like the first year, so. And we decided we wanted to do it twice a year. That way, it would give everyone a chance to do their analysis. And then when we get it, we'll be more efficient with it.
Alright, before we move on to city manager updates, any comments, concerns? Alright, Miss Scott, some other names?
Yes, I just wanted to circle back to the chief of dark shop access policy. Orders, especially for commercial businesses, not residential to add on that little addition if you want access to the trail. And that would have to have um, city approval before that's accepted. That's what I'm gonna make that quick, that's what that was.
As fast as I know, one of those is have, that would like to uh, create access to the trail. Is that, is that something we've had a lot of buzz for?
I can double check on that, honestly, I'm not a, you know, so I think there's been a couple asked.
Someone say access to, I want to say they'll go that, um. So I know like Walmart and, and Anderson, North, North Anderson, they would like to create an access trail from the trail to their property for people that may wanna get on or off the trail there and, and shop for their convenience.
I don't have any, we have some checks in the book.
But they go to what, put in as, as.
And I know at one point, I, I know that's not happening right now, I can't remember the name of the farm, but they wanted to create an access point from the trail to there and they're creating, what about a community store?
Headly farm.
Yeah, I couldn't remem- I couldn't remember, I know they're not doing it anymore, but.
They had a roadway issue, not a place to get involved, usually.
So, or they, or, who's not responsible for community access?
Yeah, so we would, they would, not, not, they would be, and Walmart had, had uh, offered, um, just from what I know about what they were about to do, they had offered to create the, the access points and maintain them.
So before they knew that, they had a permit.
Right, right, right.
That they're responsible for the maintenance and also lays out the type of material that they can use to.
Yeah, if, if they want access to our trails, we're not going to take any of that.
You can just.
They, they're for hundred sixty-six grand.
Yeah.
Particularly, of course, before, uh, the train station, we don't, we no longer have an attendant there. But what happened is, there was, I, I got a call from a person out of Atlanta. They can't buy a ticket from Atlanta to Anderson because there's no attendant. And what they, they really wanna do is to bring their bike and ride their bike back to Atlanta. But if there's no attendant, then they cannot even sell the ticket.
And then there was something about, and I'm trying to butcher this, something about they couldn't fit the, or wouldn't allow bicycles to get on.
There was uh, uh, there was some code, uh, some, that has to do with platform, the platform height and weight.
Yeah, it was in the list of projects that got cut for a while, uh, from the rail commission, this is from Toby. They've put it back into that stack of projects, the platform extension that needs to be done for those bikes on there. We should know, I would, he said maybe three to four months about, it's moving forward, that project is. So once that's done, then people could put their bikes back on the trail.
I think December maybe is, is my recollection was maybe when they knew, would know, they would exact timeline in January or February, when it was, was when they were hoping to have.
They got that online and that was the big part, I think you're right about that winter timeline. They should know a timeline of completing the project, right? It's on go right now, so.
But once that platform modification, once that platform work is done to bring up to whatever federal code, ANTRAC requires, should be able to, to load or unload bicycles.
I would think it could though. I, I, and I guess what I'm saying, if our whole selling point, going all the way to the train station, people could ride it and take their bikes and hack.
I think that would.
If we pay an attention to be there, they would, or would we?
I'm not, I'm not sure, it's fair.
No, I think what happened, I think, I don't think you were actually paying attention for it. I think it was.
I would imagine.
Um.
It wasn't like on federal.
It was actually two months, so. Two, 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 both of them, so.
The translation was paid someone, and then they decided to do away with that person.
Again, that, that's one of the things that I guess, if we ever build another trail, that'd be something, that could face some threats. That'd be something we can have some, but I want to check off on it.
No time loss for something.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, you know, some, I, I realize that information that I have could be biased. I've not seen the original studies. But neither, the information they have provided in pushing these trails is that it's a huge boost to tourism, huge. The economic impact is incredible, according to the information they gave from me. And um, so I'm just hoping that this will, once we get that platform, not we, but whomever gets the platform, and people can ride all the way from Atlanta, excuse me, Atlanta to Anderson, take ANTRAC back to Atlanta. That's a big, big tourist button, if, if, if that's correct.
I have already had people tell me that they um, personally have had, have ridden to Anderson, rented a car or even like um, a U-Haul van, driven it to Birmingham so that they could put their, their bicycle on the train, come back through Anderson to take the train back to Atlanta, or vice versa.
So one, one of the things that I would say, I mean, since even before the trail was officially completed, before that, they were getting bikers and Sunday choppers. And he, he always said sometime, maybe anywhere from ten to fourteen guys coming out. And they were staying in some cabin, in some of their big cabins over home, I guess, Gold or not, whatever. And said they would come through, and he said these guys, he had about four groups, and could say that we just come through and, you know, fourteen, ten, between ten and fourteen, they'd say it. And they'll spend anywhere from forty, sixty thousand dollars, you know, all just food they come. So we're, it's here, since we gotta get, if that platform was gonna help or they would come, because I, I don't, I don't understand, and I gotta figure out if we're gonna do it like that.
If I got to, to drive my bicycle to Birmingham.
So if I got to, to drive my bicycle to Birmingham, to get on, just to get on the train, so we're, we're figuring it out. Probably, and if we can get that coming back to, from north, northern, to, or northern, southern, or is interested in placing another attendant, or if ANTRAC attendants will. I'm sure that was the discussion, future of the council.
They passed the definition taking the ticket.
And the thing that already happened, they took the bus station, they screwed it, the bus station, first runway, they had it. We can't, is there some way we can, can't put a P I C here? Some way we can.
I think if, if loading and unloading bicycles, bicycles can be in the ANTRAC, that's if someone on the train will be able to walk, you know.
I also think the bus station is a conversation we need to have, not say, because we got down it until we start the whole. Yeah, so we, we, we definitely need to discuss that at some point. Um. But any other questions or concerns? All right, we'll adjourn. Our former colleagues are to talk very.